Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we're ready to go. Did you hear me, Mr. Chair?
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I didn't know if I was on the air. This is Chairman Ketting. I'm at home. Self-quarantine. I happened to play with the wrong guy on the golf course two weeks ago, and he turned up positive. I'm fine. I'm just home being prepared. I have a wooden spoon here to start this meeting. Good evening. It's the July 9, 2020 meeting. The City Planning Commission, Newport Beach, California. All right. Hope everybody's good. Hello, Commissioners? All right, they're not waving. Let's do call to order. Somebody tell the tech guys I can't hear anything. Meanwhile...
Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Let's do Pledge of Allegiance. Sarah, would you mind standing and doing that, or else? I'll stand up, but you won't see me. All right. Since I can't hear anything going on, I will let the staff do the roll call.
All Commissioners are present this evening.
Yeah, I'm on live right now, and so are you. I don't know how to do it. No. Everybody's listening to this call. I don't know what I'm doing. Okay, let's keep going. There it is. Can they hear me now? Can they? I can't hear them now. Embarrassing.
Mr. Chair, can you hear us now?
Okay, I'm hearing voices in the background. Hello? All right, we're back. We did the pledge. We're gonna do a roll call. Did we already do it? Raise your... I have to raise my hand, I'm here. I still can't hear anybody, but I'm going to introduce the next section. Election of Officers. This is a great night for everybody because we find new people to sit in the chairs of the Chairman, the Vice Chair, and the Secretary. With that, I make a recommendation that's on your agenda to find this categorically exempt from the Environmental Quality Act. And we begin with nominations. I still can't hear anybody, but use... Write notes down and hold them up.
Yeah. I would like to nominate Eric Wiegand for Chair.
I'd like to second that.
How we doing?
Mr. Chair, we have a motion to select Lee Lowry as the Chairman. I'm sorry, Eric Wiegand. I'm sorry, Mr. ... I apologize. Mr. Wiegand as Chairman. Can you hear me? We got nothing.
All right. So... This isn't working well, is it? For me, at least. I don't know how to unmute my mic. How embarrassing. My last night as Chairman, and I can't figure out what I'm doing. Okay.
Can you hear us? Mr. Chairman, can you hear us?
I voted, I think.
Yeah, so in light of the circumstances, I was just gonna suggest that perhaps...
Aye.
We could go ahead and move forward. It sounds like he's in support of it, just based on his last statement. And we will do this via roll call in light of the fact that we have members present and somebody on camera. So with that, I think we have a motion for Mr. Wiegand as the Chair, and we go ahead and if we can get the vote on that, that'd be great.
Yeah. I turn my speaker all the way up. It's not working.
Claire Vell, if you could do a roll call vote on that, please.
Commissioner Rosin. Aye or nay? Commissioner Climate?
Aye.
Commissioner Klostermeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Elmore?
Aye.
Commissioner Lowry?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you all for your support. All right, we will do... Now we'll elect the Vice Chair, and I'm going to make that motion. And I'm also going to make the motion for the Secretary as well, so we can handle those items at the same time. I'll nominate Commissioner or Secretary Lowry to be the Vice Chair and Commissioner Climate to be the Secretary.
I would second that.
Great, we'll do a roll call. Commissioner Rosin. Commissioner Climate?
Aye.
Commissioner Klostermeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Elmore?
Aye.
Commissioner Lowry?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. And usually what we do in these circumstances is we reposition the seats, but I think in COVID, we'll probably just hold off where we're at. And, you know... Staff, would you think we should, you know, just determine that off the record? Can that be done off the record? Or do we have to do that as a brown act?
I don't think it's necessary for us to move chairs, and I...
But I mean, can I... Can we assign the chairs, you know, off the record at a later date? So we'll do that next meeting, just so COVID cooties, we don't need to touch each other's microphones and whatnot, so... Okay, all right, so we're... We'll start the meeting. My microphone is away from my legs go, so I'm kinda sideways here. This is a time for public comments. We'll be taking them on items that are not on the agenda, that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. For those that are at home, please call 949-270-8165 to provide public comments on non-agenda items. So first, we'll go to the community room. Do we have any public members or public comments on non-agenda items? I can't see the...
You can hear me, I assume? Congratulations on your selection. My name is Jim Mosher. I had two non-agenda comments. The first one is to remind you that two meetings back, you were expecting to review the zoning administrators' grant of minor use permits for two AT&amp;T small cell installations on city streetlights. One of those, as you know, is coming back tonight. The other, we were told, would escape review because the call for review had been filed one day too late. However, when the other item comes back tonight, you're gonna be told that these installations, when they're in the coastal zone, require not only a minor use permit, but also a coastal development permit. So I'm wondering if we can have clarity as to whether that other one will indeed be needing to go back to the zoning administrator for a coastal development permit, so that it indeed could be coming back to you for review if that decision was challenged. And the second non-agenda comment I wanted to make is today there was an announcement that the City Hall is gonna be closed to the public again, starting on Monday. And I'm wondering if we could have, as I am wondering, and I suspect you are wondering, will the Planning Commission meetings be continuing?
I cannot hear anything.
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Mosher, you could proceed. I think it might have been a phone glitch, technical, so keep going. You're good.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just wondering, as you probably are, whether the Planning Commission meetings will be continued in this format? Because I think the public does appreciate this opportunity to be able to speak to you somewhat in person. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Is there anyone else in the community room? Okay, I will move on to those who are on the phone. If you are on the phone, just remember to mute your television as there is a 40-second delay, as we've heard from Commissioner Ketting. So if there's anyone on the phone, there is a signal that there is not. Okay, great. Ben, do you want to address maybe the comments by Mr. Mosher when we do the item? Because we did talk on the phone on that... Okay, great. All right, I'll move on to the request for...
No audio.
I'll continue. Request for continuances. Staff, are there any requests for continuances?
There are no requests for continuance, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and I'll be moving on to consent items. Those will be item number two, minutes of the June 18, 2020 meeting. If anyone wants to comment on this item, again, the phone number is 949-270-8165. And I think that should be displayed on your screens. And we did receive comments from Mr. Mosher that I think we'd be happy to accept. If there's any comment from anyone or any questions from Commissioners, go from there, and I'll open up the public hearing if there is anyone to speak. Doesn't appear anyone in the community room? Anyone online? Okay, all right, bring it back to the Commission.
I'd move to approve the minutes.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And does anyone wanna add the edits by Mr. Mosher?
I guess I'll amend my motion to include those edits.
I still second.
All right, great. I'll call for the vote, please. Commissioner Rosin? Okay. Commissioner Climate?
Aye.
Commissioner Klostermeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Elmore?
Aye.
Commissioner Lowry? And I'm an aye as well. And Commissioner Ketting, I'm sorry, I need to see you on the screen there, but for minutes. And can you hear us now?
I was in Zoom land. Yes.
All right, well, we're happy to have you join us, and I appreciate your support for Chair. Thank you. All right, we will move on to public hearing items. This will be item number three, the Hoag Development Agreement for One-Year Extension. That's PA 2020-065. Site location is One Hoag Drive. Staff, you may proceed.
Real quick, Chair, I need to recuse myself from this item. I sit on an advisory panel for Hoag.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Elmore.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Patrick Akis with the Planning Division. I'll be providing a very brief presentation on the Hoag Development Agreement extension. Hoag is requesting a Fourth Amendment to extend the term of the agreement one additional year in light of COVID-related impacts that have constrained their ability to plan for future development. Under the current agreement, Hoag has the vested rights to develop the hospital campus consistent with an extensive set of regulations and mitigation measures, all of which would remain unchanged by this Fourth Amendment. Last year, in 2019, the City Council approved a 10-year extension to the term in exchange for community benefits. The term is to end in the year 2029, and with approval of the Fourth Amendment, the term would be extended to 2030. Hoag's position as a regional health care provider has been affected by the pandemic, requiring its full attention and action. Temporary closures to the development industry have also reduced the time that Hoag has to act on the byright development provisions of the agreement under the term. Hoag intends to fully exercise the development allowances under their agreement, and they require one additional year to account for COVID complications and delays to development. I'm here available for questions. We also have Sandy Smith of Hoag on the line. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. That was your first item that you've presented before us, am I correct? All right, well, let's give him a little dose of what it takes to be a staff. All right, great. I'll ask Commissioners to ask any questions of staff. Commissioner Klostermeyer?
My only question is, I see that there was a $3 million public benefit fee with annual installment payments of $300,000. Do any of the terms of those payments change?
All other agreements and restrictions with the development agreement would remain unchanged by this amendment. It's really just extending that term time one additional year.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions from staff? Or from... Two staff from Commissioners? Okay. And ex parte communications. I'll start with Commissioner Rosin. Any ex parte? All right, Commissioner Climate?
I spoke with applicant's consultant.
Okay. Commissioner Klostermeyer?
None.
And Commissioner Lowry?
None.
And I... And Commissioner Ketting?
None. I spoke with the consultant for about two minutes.
Great. And I spoke with the consultant as well to discuss if I had any questions, and I did not at the time. So I will open it up to the public hearing and check with the applicant who is on the phone and to ask if they have any presentation or just if they're ready to have us ask questions when it's appropriate.
My name is Sanford Smith. I'm the Senior Vice President for Real Estate Facilities at Hoag Hospital, and we appreciate your consideration of our request. We've read the staff report and asked that you approve it. And again, and I think the pandemic has clearly disrupted a lot of businesses, including the hospital business. We have put the majority of our planning work on hold as we've been addressing kind of our daily situational crises, which is why we're asking for this extension. So we appreciate your consideration.
Great, thank you. I'll ask the Commissioners if they have any questions for the applicant. Commissioner Ketting, do you have any? I can't see him on my end, so I just, you know, if he's flagged... There we go. I'll look for you in the future. If you wave your hand, that's my cue to call on you. I just had a question in regards to finances. If there was some public comment that made it seem like that since COVID at the time wasn't, you know, as strong as it's starting to become now, that there was some consideration? Did you really have a financial impact? And I believe that is true due to having to close down your elective surgeries. But if the applicant could kinda elaborate a little bit more on the... Just a touch on the finances, that the impact of preparing for COVID, and now we're seeing some impacts to COVID, how that kind of affected this last year? Just so that, you know, the public had some questions about extending, you know, a year, but the city's not getting an extra dollar amount out of that additional year. But I do think that there is a hardship. So if you could just kind of explain that a little bit, I think would be helpful.
Yeah, I think when the crisis hit and we canceled all elective procedures, and I think as we have spoken at some of the community forums, a significant amount of just traditional health care, people were avoiding coming to the emergency room for things like heart attacks and strokes as well. What we have seen, I think, through a lot of community outreach is that we are seeing people return to the hospital for the things that they need to get done. But we had several months of incredible disruption where you could literally fire a cannon off down the hallway and not hit anybody. As a result, and again, in my role, where I'm responsible for all real estate facility operations, a significant part of our focus had been, at least for the first two quarters of the year, was all about sort of crisis response. So everything from how do we address the surge and surge tents? And if you've been to Hoag in the last month or two, you've seen, you know, we have erected a tent outside of the emergency room to, you know, things like supplies. And we closed our front entrance and turned it into a supply room so we could stock up on PPE. All of those things are very disruptive to just hospital operations. And again, working on things like long-range master planning for the lower campus was not a high priority for us and probably won't be for at least a year. So at the time that we made the request, we had thought there would be a pretty significant rebound here in the third quarter, and it looks like the crisis is gonna be with us for a while.
Great, thank you. As a side note, I went to Hoag in the ER in late April thinking I had COVID. I didn't. I had bacterial pneumonia, which is crazy because I was isolating. But I can attest that Hoag was absolutely dead in the ER. I walked right in, and there wasn't hardly a soul there. So with the shutdown, I think a lot of people weren't acting in foolish behavior that would cause you an emergency room visit because they were all stuck at home. So I can see how finances were somewhat crippled. So I just thought that was a key component to everything that's going on, and it was important to share. So I'll go to public comment in the community room. But first, I do want to again announce the phone number of 949-270-8165. If you're at home, you are more than welcome to call in with comments on this particular item. So I'll go to the community room if there is anyone. Mr. Mosher?
Thank you again, Chair Wiegand. This is again Jim Mosher. Two comments. First of all, the consultant that you referenced in your ex parte disclosures sounded like that person was a lobbyist of some kind for the hospital, and I hope that they have registered as a lobbyist or encouraged to do so. And the second comment I would wanna make, like one of the Commissioners, I'm a little surprised there's not more discussion since the city and the Hoag Hospital are reopening the agreement for an amendment, more discussion about the public benefit fee that's being paid and what it's being paid for. At the time the agreement was initially signed, it was expected that the city was going to be opening a homeless shelter, and the money is specifically allocated for that purpose. And it sounds now probably kind of unlikely that the city will be operating on its own. And I would think the Council would want more flexibility in what the fee could be used for. It might not be exactly your bailiwick of what you recommend, but I would think you would be questioning why that's not being opened at this time as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Anyone else in the community room? And anyone on the phone? There is nobody on the phone, so I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission to ask staff questions if need be or make a motion. I think, I think just for staff, while it's fresh in my head from Mr. Mosher's comments, we really don't have a say on that development agreement through the Commission here. That would be more of a council kind of discussionary item. So I think that probably something that could be discussed at the Council level after we make the recommendation that we've... If we approve it tonight. So I'll leave it to the Commission to kind of spearhead what we wanna do on this item. Or we can make a motion. Make a motion? Okay, Commissioner Rosin, for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this item as currently written.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Klostermeyer. Okay, I'll call the vote. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the screen here. Commissioner Rosin? Commissioner Climate?
Aye.
Commissioner Klostermeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Lowry?
Aye.
Commissioner Ketting?
I have a question.
Yes, sir. I didn't see your hands.
Because we don't know where this pandemic's going. Why don't we extend it for two years? I know it's a little bit late in the motion, but it's like an alternate motion, you know? And if they don't need it, great. What's the thought of the Commission?
Sure. Commissioner Ketting, I'll ask staff if that is something that's permissible in these circumstances?
No, I think it would be worthwhile to ask the applicant if that's something that they are interested in.
Sure, Mr. Smith, I'll ask you on the phone.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
We would welcome the opportunity, yes. Again, at the time we filed this, we thought we'd be through this by the end of the year. It does not look like that's gonna be the case. So we would certainly welcome the extension.
Great. Great idea, Commissioner Ketting. I would support that. I'll lean to my fellow Commissioners. You know, honestly, I think that asking Hoag Hospital for these development agreements is somewhat of a little bit of extortion. And I think over time that we should really, as a city, consider the greater impact that Hoag provides to this city and this community. And we should, in my opinion, abolish this development agreement, get rid of it, and let Hoag be Hoag. But, you know, that's a future discussion. So I'm supportive of Commissioner Ketting's alternate motion. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Did I do that right?
We would typically do it as just the maker of the motion, but I think we have a motion and a second, so...
Okay, all right. Let's call the vote on that two-year. Commissioner Rosin? Commissioner Climate?
Aye.
Commissioner Klostermeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Lowry?
Aye.
Commissioner Ketting?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That item.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the support of the community.
All right, we will move on to... Got my cheat sheet here, so I gotta follow along. Item number four, this is the AT&amp;T Small Cell, SLC 0796 Appeal. That's PA 2019-111. And Commissioner Elmore will be joining us back, too. Thank you. Site location is a public right-of-way streetlight, city streetlight number SLC 0796 at the northwestern corner of Balboa Boulevard and 30th Street. Again, before we proceed, if you want to comment on this item, please call 949-270-8165. Again, 949-270-8165. Staff, you're up, Ben.
All right. Good evening, Chair Wiegand. Commissioners, congratulations on your new seats, or soon-to-be new seats, rather. So Ben Zadiva, Senior Planner with the Planning Division. I'll provide you a brief overview of this project. All right, so diving into the background, I do wanna give you a little bit of a preface here. So Small Cell is new technology that is becoming increasingly popular and deployed nationwide as well as globally. I'm gonna let the applicant talk a little bit more about that technology in their presentation after mine. But I would note that the city's review is largely limited by federal law as much as the purview of the Commission and any other authority or decision-maker. It's limited primarily to aesthetics, land use, and environmental impacts. A big concern that typically comes up from the public is safety and health hazards due to emissions from these facilities. That is not something that you can base a decision on for this entitlement tonight. So just to give you some more context, the City Council did authorize a master license agreement for use of city-owned streetlights, and this is one of those streetlights that was considered at the time. The zoning administrator... The zoning administrator of the City of Newport Beach approved the minor-use permit before you tonight on April 16th, 2020, and then subsequently, an appeal was filed by Mr. Mark Pollock citing underlying issues with the master license agreement that I referenced. Was approved by the city council in February. This was on the agenda for June 4th, 2020 before the planning commission, however, that item was pulled from the agenda to allow staff more time to analyze the project, specifically as it relates to the requirement for a coastal development permit. So diving into Mr. Mosher's comment, Chair Weigand, there are two other projects that went before the zoning administrator before this determination was formally made that a coastal development permit is required for any small cell or telecom facility within the coastal zone boundaries, and therefore, those items will be required to get coastal development permits. Those will be going back to the zoning administrator. The only reason why you are hearing the coastal development permit tonight is because you are hearing the appeal for the minor-use permit, and the zoning administrator determined that you should hear both the appeal and the coastal development permit as one complete project. So that coastal development permit is a new item that is before you tonight. So diving into the site location, I know it's kind of a mouthful, but it is in the public right-of-way on the northwestern corner of 30th Street and Balboa Boulevard. I'm going to zoom in here for you. As you can see, it's adjacent to an unusually large parkway area that is adjacent to the residential district. The entire neighborhood is zoned residentially with exception of a outlying visitor-serving commercial parcel across the street that is the laundromat, and you do have some other commercial and public facilities to the northeast. As I mentioned, the applicant will talk a little bit more about small cell technology, but these are very calculated as far as where they can be, and therefore, it is proposed on the wider thoroughfare of Balboa Boulevard to limit obstructions when the equipment is transmitting its signal within the small range that it does serve. So the request before you is to simply remove that streetlight, SLC 0796, which is a city-owned streetlight in the public right-of-way. It is maintained by the city, and the structure is owned by the city. It is going to be replaced in the same exact location with a similar streetlight structure, and it also will have the same luminaire height, which is the light source, and I'll go into that a little bit more detail to show you what the luminaire exactly is. The overall height increase to the top of the current pole is, would be going from 30 feet approximately to about 35 feet. The antennas will be enclosed within a screening shroud on top of the replacement streetlight, and all supporting equipment will be vaulted below grade, so you essentially will not see any supporting equipment, any wires going to the antennas. It'll all be self-contained within that replacement structure. So again, this is before you tonight because it does require a minor-use permit for a public right-of-way installation of telecom equipment, and it was appealed from the zoning administrator. Typically, the zoning administrator would hear both the minor-use permit and the coastal development permit, but again, because of the appeal, you're hearing both tonight. Lastly, we did determine it requires a coastal development permit. There is no exemption afforded in Chapter 21.49 of the municipal code, which deals specifically with wireless facilities in the coastal zone. So if you look at the elevation that is on the screen, that is the current streetlight pole. If I click forward, it's going to go slow, I guess. That is the proposed, and the section that I highlighted in the red cloud is the luminaire. So if I go back and forward, you'll see the intent is that the luminaire height remains the same. That is very important, as that is something that staff was very adamant about in the design because that maintains parity as you're driving down the street. You see that same lighting standard height across all of these streetlight standards on Balboa Boulevard, excuse me, in that area. So it might be kind of hard to visualize a 2D plan, so the applicant did prepare photographic visual simulations for you. Here's an existing, and here's a proposed. So you can see once again, it's not perfect. I did my best. The luminaire height will remain the same. There will be an antenna shroud going above the pole. I want to stress that the large rectangle you see is just demonstrating that the pole has the ability to accommodate a banner if there were a decorative banner to be installed there. That is something that the city's public works department wanted to make sure it could be accommodated with the new pole design. So it's just showing that that could be accommodated. That's not part of the equipment that would be installed, so you won't see that rectangle. As part of staff review, we do require the applicant to consider alternative sites in the area to make sure there's nothing that would be maybe further away from residential or less impactful. In this case, the applicant did look at five alternative sites. I'm not going to go into those in detail. The applicant has a detailed presentation about the sites that they looked at, but for one reason or another, they were discounted as not being feasible or maybe less or inferior to the proposed site that is in the red circle on your screen. And although not required, the applicant did prepare coverage maps. This is the existing coverage. You can see that there is a gap. There's no propagation or signal shown in that area. With the proposed structure online, it does fill that significant gap in coverage that they are attempting to serve within the area. So you can see again, existing versus proposed. This is not something that staff requires to submit with the application, however, to add into the justification for why this area is important, they provided this. So when we review small cell facilities and telecoms, we do have to make certain findings. In this case, once again, it requires a coastal development permit, so staff found that it is consistent with the local coastal program. It's a city-owned streetlight that's being replaced in the same exact location with a similar structure, and it's not going to impact any coastal resources. It's inland, it's not on the beach, there's no access impacted, and it's not impacting any public view, public coastal view in the area. It is consistent with the zoning code. The zoning code allows a Class III installation, so does Title 21, which is the coastal plan, implementation plan, and there is minimized visual intrusion through using an existing streetlight or replacement streetlight in this case. It's not a new structure, it's a replacement structure in the same location, and they're altering that replacement structure with the antennas. It does have visual compatibility. As, as I mentioned, staff is very adamant about the luminaire height remaining the same, and the girth of the pole is substantially the same size, the location is the same, and all equipment to support it is vaulted underground. And then lastly, I would mention, it is compliant with Title 20 and Title 21 standards. The maximum height for a facility of this type is 35 feet. This is at 34 feet 9 inches to the highest point, so it does comply. And again, everything is concealed within the pole. As I mentioned, alternative sites were considered, and that's something the applicant will dive into a little further for you. I always like to draw your attention to conditions, because there's always a question of are we sure this is what we're going to see in the field once, if it were to get approved tonight? So staff did include several conditions that talked to substantial conformance with the plans, compliance with state and federal laws, as well as tying it down to the design that you're seeing before you. So we really want to make sure that it is the same exact location, a very similar pole to what's there today, everything is concealed within it. On top of that, we are requiring a height certification to make sure that it isn't going over the 35-foot maximum. One other important one I want to draw your attention to is conditional approval number 36, which is somewhat of a construction management plan. Obviously, you're going to be impacting the public right-of-way for a short period of time. They are required to provide traffic control plans to mitigate any sort of traffic impacts to the construction in that area. So with that, staff is recommending you conduct a brand-new hearing for this item. You're not tied to the zoning administrator's decision, in other words. You find the project is up from CEQA, and that you adopt a resolution to both approve the coastal development permit and uphold the zoning administrator's decision to approve the minor-use permit. Staff does believe all the findings can still be made even though a coastal development permit is required. As I said, it is consistent with Title 21 and Title 20 requirements. I'm available for questions. I would again emphasize that the applicant has a presentation. I know that the appellant, Mr. Mark Pollock, is on the line as well, and I believe he would go after the applicant. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ben. I'll ask staff if they, or commissioners, if you have any questions to staff. If not, we can jump to over there, but let's go with commissioner, I'll go this order. Commissioner Rosin. Commissioner Rosin, your mic might not be on, but, no, you're nowhere.
Thank you for your presentation. I do have a quick, couple, couple of quick questions. There's a landscape space there that you've referenced several times, and it appears to be the right-of-way. And there also appears to be some sort of maintenance agreement over that. Who maintains that space?
As I understand it, that is maintained by the city, but I don't know if our traffic engineer has any insight on that. Tony Bryant is here. Nothing? Okay. As I understand it, there may be a maintenance agreement with the adjacent property owner, but that's not something I'm familiar with.
Okay. Then my other question is in regard to the master license agreement. There's some comment that was brought up about the master license agreement not being in compliance. Can anyone tell us or respond to that discussion and let us know where they stand, how it stands?
That's the basis of my appeal.
Yeah, so I can kind of tag-team this with staff. The, the master license agreement is more of a real property aspect of the project as opposed to the land use, which is before this body. So it would be a separate and distinct piece of the, the transaction between the city and Verizon. However, our real property administrator did work with one of our deputy city attorneys to confirm that the insurance requirements in the master license agreement were being complied with and, and found that that was the case. And so I do want to kind of separate the decision-making that does go on with this body with respect to the master license agreement and, and the land use entitlements, but we would ensure that all of the requirements in the agreement are met.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, commissioner, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Rosin, did you have any more? Did I cut you off? I'm sorry. Okay. Commissioner Kleiman?
Sorry, my question was answered. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Ketting?
I don't have any problem with this. Why don't we move on to a motion?
All right, we'll keep on our, on our process here. Ben, we had talked on the phone about the appeal. I'm not sure if you've discussed that with staff, but regardless of the outcome, this will have been satisfied at this meeting versus going to the CDP, which would have had to if this wasn't appealed. Any discussion that you've had with staff within yourselves, if, if this goes either direction, that a refund can be given to the appellant so that, because this would be before staff at some point anyway if we weren't, if it wasn't being appealed?
That is a discussion we can definitely have offline.
Couldn't the commission make that determination tonight if we, we wish to discuss that, or is that?
You can make that party recommendation, I would think.
All right, so commissioners, what I was kind of going at with staff was, since this would have, if this weren't being appealed, it would have had to have come back to the city at the zoning administrative level, zoning, the ZA level. So I'm just thinking it would be in, in a good courtesy to just waive the fee, to keep that in the back of your head as we move forward with this. But my only question with staff and maybe the eight, so just, we don't usually do these appeals, and this is a new process for me in the five years that I've been here. Are we taking, the next step would be to talk to the appealing side, or we'll be talking to AT&amp;T? We'll talk to AT&amp;T next?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And so I guess this question that I have maybe would be AT&amp;T or maybe it would be you, but it's the, the fire station that we just approved, will there be small cell sites at that location, or is this close enough proximity that this small cell site could be covered at that location based on the coverage map that I saw?
I would imagine that that's too far away. However, the applicant's presentation may dive into that. You may be also aware that there's a separate license agreement with Verizon that is also placing sites in other proximity that may be serving the fire station more closely.
And staff, technical side, is that just coming from one of the callers and just the feedback? Okay, so IT will work on that. Commissioners, are you okay moving forward with the sound, or do you want to take a break? Commissioner Kleiman?
Sorry, I take back what I said earlier about my question being answered. I guess I'm just a little confused because we're spending all this time focused on the reason for the initial decision, but I don't think that initial decision is necessarily in question. It doesn't sound like the applicant is questioning the basis for the initial decision, and there's some other things that you're saying we can't consider here tonight, so I'm really not sure why we're taking the time to kind of go through each of these things ad nauseam when I don't think there's any dispute over, anyway, the, the items that are laid out in the staff report, unless I'm missing something.
If your question is whether the commission should proceed with the appeal, I think the answer is yes, and I have other individuals that are here for public comment, and so it would be, it could be part of your determination that, you know, all the findings have been met, but I do think that we would and should proceed with the public hearing.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, and we haven't heard from the applicant yet, so I maybe should have saved this after that, but it sounds like the applicant is taking issue with things that we are unable to consider. So, you know, we're going to hear about those things, but then we're not able to, to factor that into the decision. So I'm just, just trying to get some clarification. Sorry. Anyway, maybe we'll, we'll save this until after we've heard from the applicant. Maybe it's premature.
Thank you, Commissioner Kleiman. I would agree. I think this is kind of uncharted for us as commissioners, so I think the process probably will weigh itself out, but we'll go forward with ex parte communications. Commissioner Rosin? Okay. Commissioner Kleiman?
None.
Commissioner Klostermeyer?
None.
Commissioner Elmore?
None.
Commissioner Lowery?
None.
Commissioner Ketting?
None.
All right, and I am none as well. So I will bring it to the applicant that is AT&amp;T representative. All right, you're on. And I, is that coming from the community room or on the phone?
Yes, good evening.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Sorry for the technical. Is, is there a feedback in your room that you're picking up?
Yeah, we can hear it.
Is it pretty bad?
Yeah, it's pretty bad.
Maybe, do you think staff, we can figure this out, or should we just carry on?
I, I think if the applicant and the appellant are having difficulties hearing, then what I would recommend is that we get that rectified before we continue.
Great, great. All right, let's take a few-minute recess then until staff.
Is that an AT&amp;T problem?
I hope not.
All right, we'll take a five-minute recess and, and hope we can get this resolved.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So I will bring it to AT&amp;T. The applicant, please.